Okay, everyone. The November 19th, 2014 meeting of the City Council's called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 or closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002. Some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 on the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-spray-and-sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers, out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace, down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once you are outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation, and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to our city clerk up front. Cards are available online, the clerk's office, or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen's participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please come forward and see our city clerk staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise this morning for our invocation given by Reverend Mary Breadlau Grace and the Desert Episcopal Church, remain standing for the pledge. Let us pray. Oh God, it is in the depths of life that we find you at the heart of this moment, at the center of our soul, deep in the earth and its eternal stirrings. You are the groundedness of all being. And so, at the opening of this day, we wait not for blessings from afar, but for you, the very soil of our soul, the early freshness of morning, the first breath of day. Bless us with generosity to be nourishment for those in any kind of pain, and bless us with the soothing balm of presence, that we may slake the thirst of those who seek the necessary water of life. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. Athlete that I am, an athlete that you are, an improving athlete that Councilman Beersis, look at this, just stepping right out. Oh, comfy shoes? And are you in boots this morning?
I am.
Shiny patent leather boots.
Cowboy boots.
But they're shiny. How come cowboys never have shiny boots? Right? Because they're what they're walking in.
Yeah. Because of what they're walking in.
Right. So you're a clean cowboy. I will not repeat what he just said. And Councilman Barlow is doing good work in... Where is Councilman Barlow? He's in Texas?
Austin, Texas.
Austin, Texas for the National League of Cities. You're headed out there tonight also. Wonderful. Are you going? No. Anybody else? Okay. Oh, Mayor Protem also. He is also excused. All right. So for our first item, I'd like to invite our Communications Director, David Riggelman, to join us at the podium.
Yay!
Yay! Does he run a good ship? Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which you all know stands for: Achievement, Creativity, Teamwork, Integrity, and Ownership Now. They build our community, make life better, and I'm proud to announce that the Employee of the Month is our wonderful and special and first arriving this morning to handle your department, Mark Rosenberg. Where are you? So proud. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. And you do it so well. Mark is the acting manager of our award-winning television station, KCLV Channel 2. He's been with the city for 16 years, as young as he is, you were right out of high school, and was here when we opened KCLV. Since then, the station has flourished, winning numerous awards, including many Emmy nominations, and an Emmy win for the special Las Vegas gangs, Not Our Kids. Mark has stepped up to manage the station over the last year and has led his already creative team into thinking out of the box, not only to create content for KCLV, but also for social media channels like YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, and more. The team has made great use of GoPro camera footage and built smaller, more easily-viewed nuggets of information for these formats, which more and more you're laughing of our constituents are using. Mark collaborates with the Public Affairs Office and the Art and Design Division to ensure that all KCLV projects are finished on time and on target. He also works very closely with our City Council offices on the Access City Council show. Mark has earned the great trust and respect that his team has for him because of the integrity exhibits every day and from all of us. On behalf of the entire City Council, it's a pleasure to name Mark the Employee of the Month. Along with this award, he will have received $100 Visa gift card, compliments of the Clark County Credit Union, and $100 gift card from Mundo Restaurant, in addition to a donation of $100 that will be made to the charity of his choice by SuperPod. Mark has also received various other awards from the city and council to recognize his great work. And finally, to our left, you're naming lights. Where is Jorge and David? Now we need to be digital. Can we put some money in and get some from Betsy? Betsy is left. She knows her spending her money. But I think it would... Blinking lights. Wouldn't you like your name in blinking lights? I think so, too. I mean, we've got to be outside the box. So you will see the street sign with Mark's name on it that's posted in front of City Hall on Main Street, and of course, I want to give you this wonderful Employee of the Month plaque. I know your bride. Is your bride here?
My girlfriend.
Girlfriend. Oh. Did I preempt that one? All right, enough said. It says here, "Give the microphone to David." I should have done that.
You're on the spot, Mark. Well, Mayor, we are very proud of Mark, and he is so deserving of this award. I really think that Mark is almost the poster child for what an employee of the month is supposed to be. He's a hard worker who gets things done. He always does it with such a positive outlook, which is very refreshing. And the thing about Mark is that he lives the employee values every day, which you said. And Mayor, one of the things that's so great about Mark, and you touched on this, he's not afraid to try new things. Case in point was our social media effort. Mark and his team worked very closely with our social media team to make sure that a lot of our video content went from Channel 2 to our social media sites. The result was, you guys all know, over the last year, our number of followers skyrocketed over the last year. We have almost 34,000 on Twitter alone, and I think that was a direct result of that willingness to put the videos on there. Well, also, the inverse was true, it turned out. The willingness to put the videos on social media helped remind people about Channel 2. So over the last year, according to our viewer survey, our viewership on Channel 2 jumped 21% over the last year, and I think that's a direct result, Mark, of your willingness to embrace the way people want to communicate in the 21st century. Now, Mayor, you mentioned that he's done a great job as acting manager at Channel 2. But today, we're going to announce, here and now, that Mark is no longer acting manager. He is going to be the manager of Channel 2. So this is a big day for him all the way around, Mayor.
Wow, are we proud. That is so exciting and so well-deserved, David. I know you feel a big boulder off your back with that one. So it's wonderful.
I have a wedding announcement, too.
I didn't go that far. So come on over, let's get a picture, okay?
Can I say anything?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Can I say something?
Just because you're in charge now doesn't give you the right to be so glim, but of course.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Mayor, Council, thank you very much. David, thank you. And Jace, thank you for nominating me. I appreciate the nomination. And I just have to say, I have an amazing group, and if I didn't have KCLV employees working with me, obviously, we wouldn't have gotten as far as we have, and we are just... I am blessed with great employees. I just have to say a shout-out, a few, couple shout-outs to my employees. Nancy Byrne, who's sick today, who would love to have been here, she is watching on TV. Exactly, exactly. Thank you, Nancy. Your great support, you've been with me from the very beginning, and I'm so glad to have her help me guide this team to wonderful success. I also want to say thanks to Sue, Melissa, Ellen, Dan, Jim, Eric and Steve in the back room, there they are. Hey, guys, thank you. Working the show right now. Jesse and Tyler. And a very special today, little announcement, another announcement for my group is Nikki Marcella, Nikki Tarbell gave birth last night to a baby boy in my group, so she's doing well.
Mark.
No. Floyd, Mr. Floyd is doing great. Mom is doing well, and congratulations to Joe also, Joe Marcella, he's the grandfather, he's not here, but I just want to congratulate them on wonderful news for our group last night. I also want to say thank you to my mom and dad, my sons Max and Jonah, for understanding that I've put in a lot of extra hours in the past year, and I appreciate all their support and help, and thank you, guys. I also want to thank my girlfriend, Denora, also, for being there to support me from the very beginning. She's been there while I've had to work extra hours and long days and put in extra time into our Channel 2. And I thank everybody, and been a great... Channel 2 is great. I thank you, everybody, for watching, and enjoy the social media videos. I hope everybody will enjoy those very well. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Wrap it up for me.
Can you do a shift?
Yes, ma'am.
Here we go. Good where you are. Okay, ready? All right, come to the beers. All right, ready? One, two, three.
Hold on, one more.
Here's your chance to get on your knees.
I bet you can perform this.
Yes.
This is really, it's exciting. They must have named the baby Floyd after one of the running backs at the Chargers. It's wonderful, but I thought for sure it would be Mark. But anyway, Joe Marcella, wherever you are, thank you. Is he watching? This is great news, and how exciting to have a grandbaby. They're such fun, because you can always give them back when the diaper's full. So, for our last item, we have our wonderful... I want you to know that this councilman from Ward 6 has just gotten off a plane to be here. He's been in Washington, DC on Tulley Springs, the forever proposal project. So, here you are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thanks, David. Mark, you had a perfect opportunity there, buddy. I'd love to put that on social media, by the way. And just so everyone knows, Mark is not the only awesome person in the city of Las Vegas, but we have actually about 500 more awesome people we're going to recognize today. Centennial Hills Day of Service occurred a few months ago, and I'll let you guys talk about that, but between the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and the Light of Hope Worship Center, together, came together to clean up Centennial Hills Park for a day of service. So I'd like to ask them to come up here, please, if you would. We've got Jill Roundy from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, stake president Mark Waite, we've got Pastor David Burr, Stephanie Von Overton, Conrad Dees, come on up here, please. Just spread out. Just spread out. All of these folks standing in front of you today spearheaded a project to clean up Centennial Hills Park, and this is a perfect example of two churches coming together for our community. And I have a challenge for the rest of this community, through all of you, of course, and that's that I'd like to see more of that take place in the city of Las Vegas, where people of different faiths come together and work together for the same end. And so, it's great for us to be able to recognize you today. They put together 500 volunteers to go out to Centennial Hills Park, clean up the trash, paint the butterfly park, the tables, the bathrooms, they did a clothing drive, you guys did a shredding event, you did a blood drive. I mean, this is huge. So, I'm so proud of these organizations. I would like, Jill, if you would, talk about this and how this all came together before we hand it over to the pastor.
Okay, great. First of all, just want to thank you for the opportunity here to come here today, and it was such a great experience just seeing the need in our communities, all of us have. We live in our area, and to take pride and to join together with other like-minded congregations. And so, that is what we did with this, with Light of Hope, and our congregation joined together, and our goal is to continue this. And so, we started already saying, this is our annual event. And so, in the community, we'll find things and join with other congregations that are like-minded and that want to serve in the community. We know that we're stronger in numbers, and when we join together with, instead of each of us doing our individual projects and service, then as we join together, there's strength in numbers. And so, it was a great experience. We did have a couple other people that are not here today. Our President Truman and Tom Prince and Darren Houston were involved in the planning, and of course, everybody that's here today in the planning meeting that took us about, probably about eight months, seven, eight months in planning. But what a great event, and so many people, we had some good experiences of some people coming. With the clothing drive itself was, it was a free yard sale or garage sale type of thing, and there were some families that did not... One family came through, and they had just lost everything in their home. They were refurbishing clothing for their children. So many of them wanted to know, what... This is for free? And we did the collections through Desert Industries Trucks, donated their trucks for us, and then everything that was left over from that event, we gave back to Desert Industries. So it was just such a great event for the community, helped clothe children and families, and I think that people were just amazed at just the service that was given, so it was great. And we take pride, too. The children did a... And I'll finish up here, but they did one table with all of their hands on it, and how sweet for these children to go back and take pride and look, you know, a few years down the road and say, "That's my handprint." And they take personal pride and responsibility in cleaning up the park.
Yeah, I think Jill covered it all there, but it was just a great partnership, as everyone's alluded to, coming together with President Wade and the LDS Church. As you mentioned, we, too, would like to see more partnerships like that, not just within the Centennial Hills area, but just throughout the Vegas Valley. And it was just a great coming together of like-minds, you know. It's not just that our churches are there, our children go to school in that area, some of us work in that area, we certainly patronize the businesses in that area. And so, I think it was an opportunity for us to set a theme or set the tone to say, hey, we can come together and have a greater reach and impact more people by pulling our resources together. And so, just a great time, as Jill mentioned, those that were involved. This is certainly not all those that worked long hours to help support this effort. You know, my wife couldn't be here today, and she was also very much involved, and it was really great to see everyone come out and whatever our differences may have been, we had a common goal, and to kind of rise to the occasion to be a blessing to that community. It was great to be a part of that.
I am bubbling with pride right now. I'm just full of pride right now because of what you guys, the example that you're setting for the rest of this community and other faiths throughout Southern Nevada to do this as well, and seize that moment to give back to your community. You hit it on the head. You guys live in Centennial Hills, you go to the businesses there, your kids are going to school there, and Jill, it's the pride of those youngsters when they know they've accomplished something good in this community. Mayor, this goes right along with, I think, your faith initiative and the things that you're trying to accomplish as well with all of the churches throughout Las Vegas. So, again, give them a great big round of applause here. President, I'll give these to you, to distribute, if you will. You guys are a great example to us. Thank you for your service to... I'm a little biased here about Centennial Hills, but all of us as council members are very prideful of our areas and the things that we can accomplish. So this is a beautiful example to make a difference in our community. You guys continue to do that. I'm blessed to be here with you today. Thank you very much. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. What a great, great effort.
And tomorrow morning, actually, is the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, and Jim, Joan Kropid of Centele, they were the creators, along with my predecessor, I think, for this Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, which is going to be held at Texas Station. I will be out of town. And our glorious councilwoman, Lois Tarkanian, will participate, answer questions from the audience of young people. They usually have about 800 people there, 600 of which are students from the district.
You didn't even answer questions. I thought I had the prayer.
That's the fun. You will say a prayer, too? Okay. But anyway, what a great opportunity, then, to make that request made of all the churches and religious organizations joining together in the effort. It's been out there in Ward 6. I think it could be great. So, we are now, we have concluded this portion, and we will give everybody five minutes. Five more? Five minutes. You can do it. Takes five minutes to walk up. So we'll do 10 minutes? Five minutes?
It's easy with me, yeah.
Okay, that's the license. Five minutes. That's where we are. So go quickly. Where are you? Wonderful. Floyd. Beautiful. Congratulations.
Congratulations.[1443.01]
All right, everyone, we're ready to carry on. Wrong, we're not. You're in the room. Well, since Councilman Coffin is in the room, I'm going to go ahead. Am I allowed to do that ethically and practically? Okay, here we go. This is Agenda Item Number Eight. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the Agenda for Action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the Agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. We'll set the time at one minute because you have a time at the end to do more. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine. For possible action, any items that the council staff or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. And we have one item. It's Agenda Item 43, R382014, advanced to 12th, third, yes, December 3rd, 2014, requested by staff. And so that will be my motion. Please vote on the motion. And please post. And that motion carries. What was the ward on that one, on 43? Oh, it's citywide. Okay, thank you. We will now move on to Agenda Item 10, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the Special Joint City Council and Planning Commission Meeting of August 25, 2014. May I have a motion, Councilwoman, to approve those minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Thank you. The motion carries. Did that include the minutes that we held last time because they were incomplete? Ms. Clerk?
Those minutes had already been approved. That was the error that we made on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. Items 11 through 40 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to be brought forward? Okay. Would you make a motion, then, to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. This motion, please vote and please post. And we will move on to Agenda Item 41. This is administrative. Report by staff to provide an overview of the implementation of the Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan, which focuses on the neighborhood generally located within a half-mile radius at the intersection of Eastern Avenue and Sunrise Avenue. And this is in Ward Three with Councilman Coffin. And good morning, Mr. Parago.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Tom Parago, Acting Planning Director. Very excited to be here today to talk about the Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan. This is planning's fourth walkable community plan. These plans have proven to be a great opportunity to drive investment into some of these neighborhoods to make them more livable, more walkable, and provide a better overall quality of life for our citizens. With me today is Mr. Canoyer, who actually did the plan, and so I'll turn it over to him to give you a presentation on the plan.
Thank you very much. And if you'll announce yourself and affiliation, please.
Good morning. My name is Dave Canoyer. I'm with the Department of Planning here to provide a brief overview and update of the Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan. So as Tom mentioned, this is the fourth in a series of walkable community plans developed by the city, and these plans work to address community elements, including safety, comfort, and overall connectivity. The Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan area was selected for its high concentration of goods and services within relative close proximity to residential areas. And so the plan itself centers, excuse me, this plan itself centers around a half-mile radius or 10-minute walk of the intersection of Eastern and Sunrise Avenues. So the total population of the Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan area consists of approximately 8,100 residents. So of those 8,100 residents, 36% do not own an automobile, and that's a rate that's nearly four times that of the city average. So 45% of area residents also commute to work through alternate modes, and that includes walking, public transportation, and carpooling. So this plan was adopted via resolution just three months ago, and the process leading up to that adoption consisted of the Department of Planning hosting several neighborhood open houses to allow area residents an opportunity to provide input for the plan. So we received strong participation from those who live within the plan area and received plenty of community insight, suggestions, and ideas. For those who couldn't attend the neighborhood open houses, the Walkable Community Plan webpage offered a forum for 24-hour participation where residents could take surveys, review draft versions of the plan document, and then email their thoughts and suggestions to us. And so once the draft version of the plan document was completed, the Department of Planning returned to the community through additional open house events to solicit feedback and comments from area residents. And so once this final stage of outreach was completed, the final Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan document was developed. So the plan is divided into three sections, and that consists of the introduction, which is an overview of what a walkable community plan is, and it also discusses city-adopted policies that support walkable community plans. The second section is titled, "The Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan," and that provides an overview of the plan area as well as discussions on ways to improve walkability throughout the plan area. The third and final section is the Plan Implementation Section, and that contains a series of 57 recommendations, which consists of community amenity recommendations, community design recommendations, and complete street recommendations. So the community amenity recommendations include encouragement of deficient uses within the plan area, so things like offices, banks, home improvement stores, and bakeries. It also encourages a mix of uses and housing types to increase walkability and then the self-sufficient nature of the plan area itself. It also includes recommendations to place bicycle racks at places like schools, shopping centers, and community rec centers. It also recommends conducting light level studies to ensure adequate nighttime pedestrian lighting at crossings and alleyways. The community design recommendations include addressing things like connectivity in transit stops, landscape elements. It also addresses fixing damaged, chipped, cracked, broken, and uneven portions of sidewalk, as well as addressing bringing all crossing buttons, warning mats, sidewalks, and ramps in compliance with the current Americans with Disabilities Act standards. It also recommends working with the RTC to provide at minimum a bench and a garbage can at each transit stop located in the plan area. And then it also suggests, recommends, excuse me, adding street trees and existing and newly-created landscape buffers and medians to provide shade to allow for pedestrian comfort. The complete streets recommendations include recommending wider sidewalks and street trees along Fremont Street, Charleston Boulevard, Stewart Avenue, and 25th Street. It also recommends adding bicycle lanes along Stewart Avenue, 28th Street, and 25th Street. It also recommends dedicating bicycle route signage to encourage alternate modes of transportation along 21st Street, Burnham Avenue, and Franklin Avenue. It also recommends placing shade trees within existing amenity zones and roadway medians. And then also suggests adding corner bulbouts to street intersections, similar to what we see on Fourth Street downtown, to reduce pedestrian crossing distances. So one of the ways that these recommendations are currently being implemented is through the Sidewalk Infill Program, which will seek to install missing sidewalk sections, new sidewalk ramps, and replacing old ramps to comply with current American with Disabilities Act standards. Upcoming plan areas that will be affected by this program include Marlin Avenue between Bruce and 23rd Street, Stewart Avenue between Bruce and Eastern Avenue, 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st, and Cervantes Streets, all between Sunrise Avenue and Stewart Avenue, Ash Street between 21st and 23rd Streets, Sunrise Avenue between Bruce and 21st Street, and 21st Street between Sunrise Avenue and Fremont Street. So additionally, next steps to look towards for implementation of the plan recommendations include future sidewalk infill projects at Sunrise Avenue between Eastern and 26th Street, Valley Street between Eastern and 26th. And then we'll also seek to identify additional projects to prioritize, such as striping or restriping existing crosswalks to enhance pedestrian visibility. We'll look at landscape opportunities to provide shade and, again, allow for pedestrian comfort, and we'll review existing mid-block crossings for enhancements. So beginning the implementation of these recommendations will help carry forward the vision that the area residents saw in the development of the Rafael Rivera Walkable Community Plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask questions? And can we open for questions?
Absolutely.
First of all, that's interesting because I know in our neighborhood, most of the crosswalks have appeared to have been painted. I'd love what is now in effect. Is this something that's going citywide where these retain their whiteness for a longer period of time? I guess it's more for David and Jorge. And then I have another question, which probably annuors over to them as well.
Sure. And as they're walking down here, what's so exciting about being part of these plans is that we work very closely with Public Works to develop the plans and to implement them. And so Public Works does have a program to update these, to make sure these stripings are updated annually. I think they go through the city, but I'll let Dave speak to that.
Sure. Yes, anytime we do a major project reconstruction, we will use the white tape, the thermoplastic tape.
And is that something that's sort of new? And so we don't have to go out and repaint as we used to do in the old days?
We've been doing it for the past couple of years, actually, trying to upgrade to the elastomeric tape.
Okay. And my second question is, which I may be redundant to what you've done in the past, but this looks like such a wonderful project. Do we flag the poles with a banner saying this Rafael Rivera where and how, way, or what walkable community, or something? The flags up high where nobody can tag them and do things to them, but that identifies the walkway? And do we have funds to do that? And then also in the other not-walkable neighborhoods?
I'll have to ask Mr. Canoyer. He's predate my tenure in planning, so I'm not completely familiar with that.
So that type of identification is not something that's specifically pointed out within the plan document, but it's definitely something, placemaking, that we as planners would love to employ.
I mean, to me, certainly, and knowing the neighborhood so well, that it really gives a sense of pride, and if you're going to tag a neighborhood with a wonderful and historical name, this is even better, and to put them similarly in each neighborhood, whatever the walkable community has determined to be.
And I think that's a great idea, and we will absolutely take a look at that with Public Works and see if there isn't a way that we can brand this so that people know when they come into it, it's a special area, we're paying attention to this, we're making it walkable, this is a walkable community. So absolutely, that's something that, as Mr. Canoyer says, is near and dear to planners' hearts, is the idea of placemaking. So we will definitely take a look at that.
And with some continuity, if I might add, because I'm sure we're going to add more walkable communities in the future, and therefore, as they go from one to the next, they should be able to identify, well, this is this very special neighborhood, and here we're, and then ultimately, we will have it on our brochure, our maps, that will go in the front of that brochure that comes out twice a year, that says, these are the walkable communities, these are the bikeable communities, and you will notice with these flags, if you would do that, you know, metal, like you have the Indisha for the medical district, but something that's been up high so they can't tag.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I could help on that. This program, of course, it's not based on the identifiability of a neighborhood so much as it is on the identifiability of the assets or qualities of a neighborhood to those who can walk within 10 minutes of an arbitrarily chosen midpoint. So it's really hard to tell what you would call that neighborhood. It's just a convenience term, I suppose, when you think about it, because there are several neighborhoods that are already identified in there, like Mayfair. I think it touches Mayfair, maybe a little bit of Crestwood, encompasses all of Sunrise Acres, I think. And so there's all kinds of neighborhoods already kind of self-identified in there. And, but I think that those, if we were to pick our geographical areas by neighborhood and then say, is that walkable or not, then you could do that, for sure. But I think, I do want to ask a question about the tape, because this has been a subject, and this is off the subject in a sense of what we did here. But I know we purchased a machine to clean the tapes. We purchased one so we would be able to clean the bicycle tapes, for sure.
We were actually in the process of purchasing that machine.
Oh, we haven't bought it yet?
No, we have not.
Oh, well, when will we buy it?
It's, it should be within a couple of months.
Is that, started a year ago, and now it's maybe a couple of months away? Okay. Purchasing, that's low?
No, no, it's not entirely. Then we had to select a machine, you know, and there was quite a, quite a, you know, a lot of suppliers out there supplied that type of thing.
Okay. Because it's, we don't know yet how this will work, tape versus paint. We don't, we haven't done a cost-benefit analysis to determine. We just kind of have a feeling that tape might work better, because it depends on how long it lasts and how much cleaning it'll take, because they need cleaning. And so we've got a specialized cleaner, we hope. Paint, on the other hand, at least. Paint, on the other hand, at least, can be redone, and we know that, I don't, I don't even know, maybe you can paint on top of tape. Is that possible, if you can paint the tape?
You know, I cannot say for sure. I would assume there's a potential for that, but it is a different type of material than asphalt, and the paint that's made, the latex paint, is made for asphalt, but I guess there could be a possibility.
We don't know yet if that's a good permanent solution to what we have here with our 150 and 60-degree asphalt.
And Councilman, I would tell you, the Conference of Mayors, we have different groups that are looking into this, so there may be, what they're doing, what is the best, because those brand-new biking lanes that come out of, around City Hall, they're already, I mean, they're dark.
They're already getting dark.
No, we had spoken to that, and Jorge Cervantes had said that the cleaning, as I recall, rather than the repainting, from what you understood, was going to make a great difference, because they become sort of gray.
Yeah, it's a better solution, because the thermoplastic tape is more permanent, you know, and it just needs to be cleaned and freshened up, so that should be a viable solution.
And so, that's in our, it has to be in our budget and our asset management plan, and how often and how much we have to do and spend. It's all part of the, you know, the plan of organizing, how to do our budget, but you're very familiar with my feelings on that. I just wanted to say that, first of all, congratulations on this plan. It started, I think, a year after I came into this office. I went to a number of meetings, and Tom, before you took over planning, the staff had done a great job of reaching out to the public and holding meetings at times where public could attend, and so they could understand and ask questions. There were a lot of, just a lot of availability. And so, sometimes you didn't have very many people, but who, people showed up, they all showed up because they were interested and they had ideas. And then, our staff, your staff, Dave, would then take people's ideas and bring them back in and work them into the plan. And that was the goal for all the outreach. And this is great, because it means essentially, what we're trying to do is admit that for a couple of generations, we just gave the whole darn community over to the automobile with no consideration at all for the pedestrians, people who want a bicycle. And this is part of the, you know, the war to take it back for the people, because it's a lot safer when we have wider sidewalks and we have trees and shade. So, I'm really happy about this, and we're going to have to have them continuously, we're going to have to always use these principles wherever there's a lot of people.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report. It's great news. So, you'll get back to us and let us know if we're going to put that in budget?
Shall we move for?
No, it's just a report, so, a presentation. So, thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item 42, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Award of Contract Number 104-175-CB, Contract for Consulting Services for the Las Vegas Medical District Master Plan, Department of Economic and Urban Development Award, Recommended to Smith Group LLC, for $199,840, General Capital Projects Fund. This is award one with Councilwoman Tarkanian. And, morning.
Good morning. Scott Adams, Deputy City Manager. I'm going to be pinch-hitting for Bill Arnt, due to his rapidly deteriorating voice, so I wanted to introduce this item and introduce Shawnee Coleman, who'll be coming up and presenting the item. But let me give you a little bit of backdrop before I do so. As you know, the city is very engaged in the medical district. We formed a Medical District Advisory Council, working with all the stakeholders within the medical district to really come together, collaborate, and plan how we can vision and develop the future of the medical district. In that capacity, I've been leading the city's team on that effort, and I asked Shawnee Coleman to lead our Planning Committee of that Advisory Council, that consists of all the planning folks from each of those key institutions within the medical district. And Shawnee has done an outstanding job in stepping up and coordinating all the efforts of those groups and getting us to the point where we are today in terms of selecting a consultant and starting the effort to do a major master plan for that district. So, I wanted to recognize her for her efforts. She's done a great job, and so, I asked Shawnee to come up and present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, and welcome, Ms. Coleman. This is great you have been doing. I know, I've been watching you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Please go ahead.
Good morning. For the record, Shawnee Coleman, Senior Economic Development Officer with the Economic and Urban Development Department. As Scott mentioned, we're going to kind of take you through the process that we went through in selecting a consultant for the master, for the Facilities Master Plan for the medical district. As you see, the map that we have here kind of outlines what the district or the area that we're going to be looking at. The yellow dotted border that you see, that's the larger plan, but the goal right now is to focus on the historic medical district, or what we consider the historic medical district, which is that light brown area, or light yellowish area that you see in the center of the map. It also identifies UMC and Valley Hospital. So, the goal for the Medical District Master Plan, one of the things that we wanted to do is coordinate all of the efforts from the various entities that are already in the medical district. So, we're working with NSHI, Valley Hospital, UMC, all of them have their individual plans for growth and expansion, and we wanted to coordinate that to create a cohesive master plan for the area. We also wanted to look at integrating the new or a new allopathic medical school. There's been a lot of discussion in the Valley about the possibility of UNLV opening out allopathic medical school, and we wanted to show what a school would look like in the area. Another goal was to identify key locations for development. So, through various studies that we've done, we, there's been things identified, such as residential growth, retail growth, and we want to identify where those, or where those locations, or where the possibilities for those to be. We also wanted to increase pedestrian walkability. So, one of the things that is happening in the district, there's a lot of transition with upgrades to freeways, upgrades to streets, streetscaping, and so, we want to increase the walkability of the district. And then, we also want to improve vehicular ingress and egress out of the district. So...
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
No problem.
It's terminology, is my question. We've talked about integrating a new allopathic medical school there, which by definition means not any other kind of medical school or training. And I'm trying to find out, did we decide that that should be narrowly focused on exactly that, or has it been suggested by others?
Through some of the studies, there was a recent study done by Applied Analysis that looked at all of the studies and everything going on in the medical district, and one of the things that they found was because the central location of the Las Vegas Medical District, that it would be a primary location for an allopathic medical school.
Well, because allopathic then rules out homeopathic and osteopathic. And I was thinking, well, yes, there is an osteopathy school here, it's in Henderson. And I think, you know, you want to be careful not to get so narrow in your definitions that you, by definition, then rule out helping or integrating something else that may come along, and we've got to redefine everything, and why don't we just say medical school, is my point?
We definitely can do that. We want to make sure that we're open to all possibilities in growing and developing the medical district.
Okay. And I think that certainly would help, as long as we're not locked into allopathic.
And I would concur with that. I think it's very important. I think that's a good point.
Madam Mayor, may I just weigh in here? Let me just add a little bit to this. We're also reacting to a very major initiative that's been launched at the state level to migrate the current University of Nevada School of Medicine into two medical schools. The plan is, and there's been an OMAU entered into between the System of Higher Education and UNLV, to have the University of Nevada School of Medicine focus in the north, create a new School of Medicine in the south, that would eventually be based at UNLV, and be a UNLV medical school. And it's been determined by them to be an allopathic medical school. We're clearly, in our efforts that we're going forward with in the medical district, not focusing on any one kind of healthcare, but simply reacting to the fact that NSHI's in that area, and in their plan is to build a new allopathic medical school, and we want it in that district.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Please go ahead.
Well, I just want, Your Honor, I just want to make sure that, yes, that's fine, for whatever NSHI might control, but they wouldn't control somebody else's medical training. We may welcome, for example, Turo, should they decide to leave Henderson and come to the area? They're a DO school.
Well, they're actually, Turo is actually doing their residency program at Valley Hospital in the medical district, and Turo is on the Advisory Council, because they do have that residency presence in the district.
Well, I just know that there's always power struggles, having been involved in that in Carson City for 28 years, this medical society against that medical society, and it boils down to words are very important.
Right.
And you see, the point is I'm trying to make here, without getting us caught in a war of words, we simply just leave it out, that's all.
All right. So, we want to talk, excuse me, a little bit about the process that we went through to select a consultant. So, we used the city's standard RFP process, or Request for Proposal process, through our purchasing department, and we issued an RFP on June 3rd of this year, and that RFP was open for approximately 30 days. In that first round, we actually received 11 proposals. However, all of the proposals that we received were over the budgeted, or the allotted amount. So, we revised the scope of work, and we issued another, or revised, a request for best and final proposal to the 11 respondents, of which 10 actually submitted revised proposals to us. And then, from that, we had a selection committee, and the selection committee consisted of seven members. As you can see, we had four internal members from Ward One, from the City Manager's Office, Economic and Urban Development, and the Planning Department. And then, externally, we invited some of our stakeholders to participate in that. We had UMC, Valley Hospital, and UNLV as representatives on the selection committee.
And who from UNLV? I don't mean the name, but the position that individual holds.
This is their Director of Real Estate and Planning. So, this is the person that is responsible for scoping out the development plans for the UNLV campuses, both on Maryland Parkway and in the medical district. From that, the selection committee actually read all of the proposals, and from that, they narrowed the 10 proposals down to the top four based on what the respondents provided in their written documents. And then, from that, we took the top four, and we actually scheduled and had interviews, and allowed each of the top four respondents to come in and do a formal presentation, and allowed the selection committee to actually interview and ask questions. Through that process, we ended up with ranking the top four, and our top candidate was the Smith Group. And some of the reasons that we selected the Smith Group was their extensive experience with medical center campus master planning, also healthcare institutions, and they also had a component where they dealt specifically with medical educational facilities. They also had a local presence with Carpenter Sellers, and we have the consultant here with Carpenter Sellers here, if you have any specific questions for them. But they also have a familiarity with the district already. They've done some work with UNLV. They've done some work specifically with UNLV's educational campus in the medical district, so those are some of the reasons why they were selected. Some of the expectations, some of the things that we plan to gain from completing this master plan exercise is to have a 15-year projection on the district's expansion needs. Some of you may know that not too long ago, there was a study done by Trip Unbach, and that study looked at a 15-year projection, so we are trying to mirror that study to show what the district and the development needs are for 15 years. Again, identify the development opportunities, integration of an allopathic into Councilman Coffin's point, any type of medical education in the district, integration of state public and, of state and city public right-of-way projects, finalization of the boundaries. As we looked at earlier, there's that yellow boundary. We just want to make sure that that's the right boundary. We did an expansion, we're calling that a study area. We want to make sure that all of that that we included is actually the right thing to do. And then, also incorporate some of the initiatives that were recently adopted by this council, such as Southern Nevada Strong, and some of the planning efforts that are going on in the medical district. Our timeline, so with, if we get approval today, we are going to actually have a kickoff meeting on December 9th. That will start, we will have a planning, an Advisory Council Planning Committee. The consultants will come in, we will do a little bit of visioning and set out a more detailed timeline. But the goal is to have some type of preliminary plan available in February, and the purpose of this is to identify where medical education fits in the district, and if necessary, support and help any efforts that UNLV has in making their requests for a medical school in Southern Nevada. And then, we hope to have something finalized by the end of the fiscal year. So, that's our general timeline. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the award of the consultant contract.
You might have mentioned it, and I didn't pay attention, I'm sorry. The Smiths Group is from where?
They are based out of Arizona, but they are working with a local consultant, Carpenter Sellers, and we do have a representative from Carpenter Sellers here, if you'd like to speak with them.
And how many districts? What's their history of developing medical districts? Have they been doing it for 20 years, 50 years, five years? Do you have that information?
They have been in existence for a number of years. I don't have the specific timeline, but I believe they started in 1968, and they've done a variety of medical district campuses, educational medical district campuses throughout, but I don't have the detailed number.
Could you just send that to my office?
I sure can.
I'd like to see it, since I've been working with Councilwoman from the onset of my term as mayor, and very interested in this. My other question regarding the medical district, we have a brand-new president at UNLV, so I'm sure there'll be some involvement there with our city staff. And then, of course, through this process, was it the intent at all of the process to have an open meeting, or not?
Yes. Through this process, we plan to have a number of community outreach and involvement as we, as we go through. We haven't gotten to the point where we've detailed out how that's going to happen and when that's going to happen, but that is included in the scope of work.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Any comments, questions from? I'm going to go ahead and make the motion. We have excused Councilwoman, there's been an urgency in her family, so we, I'm just going to go ahead and move to accept this report and ask for your indulgence.
And approve the contract.
Approve it.
And approve the contract.
Yes.
And please vote, and please post. Shawnee's just great. How many years you been with the city?
Seven and a half.
Wonderful. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Shawnee. Appreciate it. And Scott, thank you. We'll move on. No. Agenda item 43 has been abated to December 3rd, correct?
Yes.
Okay. 44, Boards and Commissions, Possible Action, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, William Teal. His term expires December 17th, 2014. He has resigned, and do we have recommendations?
Yes, Mayor.
Please.
I would move to appoint Tommy White to this board, and even though the requirement does not require this to be a city resident, he is a city resident and Ward Six resident also, so he'll be a wonderful addition to the board. That's my motion.
Wonderful. There's a motion to appoint Tommy White to the unexpired term, which means immediately, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. So, would you please, that motion, please vote, and please post. And Councilman Coffin, are you voting in the affirmative? Would you throw a pill over there? Tackle him. This is to vote on Tom. It's all right, but this is important, too. Tommy White, affiliate, the expired term, Parks and Recreation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And would you please post?
Just call me anytime.
You didn't vote?
He did.
He did say he did. Could you signify by aye or nay to Clerk? She didn't get it.
I'm sorry, Clerk. Please put me down as a yes. I'll try again. I left you some.
Thank you. That motion carries, so you will contact Mr. White for us, please. Thank you very much. We're very pleased, and thank you to Mr. Teal for your service. We'll move on to Agenda Item 45. Councilman Coffin, would you like to have the bill read?
He would.
He would? Please read the bill for Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know he would, too. Bill number 2014-16, Honors to Adopt a Public Facilities and Services Element of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan and Fight for Related Matters. the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan and provide for related matters.
All right.
Mayor, I'd move to approve.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion to approve the bill, 45. Please vote and please post. And Agenda Item, oh, excuse me, I didn't. Okay. And that motion carries. On Agenda Item 46, Councilman Coffin, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Number 2014-69, ordinance to adopt the updated standards for the street schematic design of Southern Park and provide for related matters.
Would you like to make a motion with your phone on? Thank you.
I will now move for approval of item 46.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on 46. Would you please vote and please post? That motion carries. Agenda Item 47, Bill number 2014-70, will be heard at a later meeting. We will move on to new bills. Agenda Items 48 through 72, Bills 2014-74 through 2014-98, will be heard at the Recommending Committee Monday, December 1, 2014. Mr. City Attorney, would you read the bills, please?
On behalf of the Your Honor, I'm going to read the first of the new bills and the last of the new bills, and then I have a proposal to read the rest of them all at once to save a lot of time. With that, it's Bill number 2014-74, an ordinance to amend Las Vegas Municipal Code, Chapter 11.10, pertaining to parking violations and unjust authority and responsibility pertaining to the towing and immobilization of vehicles and provide for related matters. The last of the new bills is Bill number 2014-98, ordinance to amend LVMC 6.50.040 to permit a limousine service to provide one complimentary 750 milliliter bottle of sparkling wine or champagne to passengers and other related matters. So the rest of the new bills, 2014-75 through 2014-97, all have the same title. The Las Vegas City Charter requires that I read these bills into the record by title, but since they are all of the same title, I am going to read Bill number 2014-75, and as the record reflect that I am in effect reading that same title for the remainder of the bills all the way through 2014-97. And with that, it's Bill number 2014-75 through 2014-97, ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly strive to align the annex to make it so that it's up to the law's obligations and benefits of the city and provide for related matters.
Mayor, may I point out for Mr. Gerbick's sake and the public's sake that these are all annexations that he did the swath of reading of these bills?
For the record, all of these involve separate parcels, but the ordinance requires I read the title, and the title does not reflect the separate parcels, but the reading of the agenda will reflect that.
Thank you, Mr. Gerbick. So these, again, these will all be heard December 1st, Monday, in the Clerk's conference room. Correct?
No, ma'am. They are going to be heard down on the first floor in our training rooms. Because of the volume, we're not able to handle that many people upstairs in our conference room.
Very important, then.
Same time, just a different location.
Okay. Thank you. And so Councilmen Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin will be hearing those. That took us through, what was the number? What was the last number?
72.
72. So we will recess, unfortunately, because it's posted at 1:00. We have to recess till 1:00 PM and to stay on task, so that's what we're doing. Thank you all. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. You're live in the House.
Thank you.
Thank you. 12:59. I'm waiting to be totally punctual. There it goes. Okay. We are into our afternoon session. And Agenda Item 73, for possible action, items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Ross, would you do thus the honor?
I will. Thank you, Mayor. And this is, I see some folks in the audience today for some of these items, so please pay close attention. Agenda Item 74, SUP 55195, applicant Davis Funeral Home on Memorial Park. The item has been requested by applicant to be obeyed till the December 17th meeting. Agenda Item 81, a review of condition, 55188, applicant Y Opco LLC, abeyance requested by the applicant to December 3rd, 2014. And Agenda Items 82 through 84 has been withdrawn without prejudice. Those are GPA 55775 and Zone Z O N 5577 and SDR 55779, applicant owner Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, presiding bishopric. Agenda Item 89, a special use permit, 55012, applicant owner Brian and Judy Pfizer Living Trust. Applicant has asked that to be obeyed till December 17th, 2014, and that's my motion, Mayor.
Thank you. There is a motion, but I noticed Ms. Lassovich came in, and did you hear that Agenda Item 74 has been obeyed to December 17th? Okay. And I gather our wonderful crowd here that's come in early, we're in relationship of 82 to 84?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor. Just maybe a brief explanation from Brian. Would you want to explain what that means, withdrawing an item without prejudice for the public?
That simply means that Councilman and Mayor, that this item will be taken off of this agenda and the applicant will reapply at another time.
If they wish to.
If they wish to.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming down. We appreciate that. So there's a motion on those agenda items. Please cast your vote and then please post. And Councilman Barlow is with us from Texas, where it's probably not as nice as it is here. But thank you. By phone, he is here.
And I'm here, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda Items 40, well, it's listed here, 40 through 78 may be considered in one motion, one vote, but as you've just heard, Agenda Item 74 has been obeyed to December 17th. So this will be for Items 75 through 78 may be considered in one vote, one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. This is Agenda Item 75, RQR 54752, applicant Walgreen Company. Owner Lake West Las Vegas Properties LLC. A required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 37605, for a 79-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing 15,048-square-foot retail establishment at 1101 South Las Vegas Boulevard C-2 General Commercial. This is in Zone, and this is in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Agenda Item 76, EOT 56242, applicant Fitz Street Gaming LLC owner, 899 Fremont LLC. A request for an extension of time for a non-conforming use tavern at 899 Fremont Street C-2 General Commercial Zone, also in Councilman Coffin's Ward 3. VA, Agenda Item 77 and 78. Okay. VAR 55763 and SDR 55764, applicant West Care Nevada Inc. Owner Fitz House Enterprises Inc. Request for variances to allow a zero-foot front yard setback for proposed portico share where the 10-foot feet is required and to expand the parking lot and add a portico share with waivers to allow a zero-foot perimeter landscape buffer width where 15 feet is required adjacent to the rights of way and to allow a zero-foot width adjacent to interior lot lines at 323 North Maryland Parkway C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. The Planning Commission recommends approval on all items 75 through 78, and all items are recommended for approval by staff. All items are public hearing items which I now declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on any of these items? Please come forward and state your name. Okay. Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. And Councilman Ross, do you have a motion to approve Agenda Items 75 through 78?
That is my motion, Your Honor.
Okay. There's a motion. Please vote.
Aye.
Thank you. And please post. Motions carry. And we'll move on to Agenda Items 79 and 80.
Were you going to bring Item 90 and 91 forward?
Yes. Thank you very much. What we're going to do right now, thank you, I'm just so glad somebody follows up on me. We are going to pull forward, because there's a plane to cash, Agenda Items 90 and 91. And so if you will all turn to those items. See, when you're having a good time, you just go into your rotation and forget everything you're supposed to be doing here. Okay.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, Councilman. It's good to be back here again.
I'm sorry, Mayor. You don't need to read those.
Let me read them, if you would, for one quick moment, please. You're anxious, and I know the plane awaits. So here we go. Council has got Agenda Items 90 and 91. Item 90, SUP 55715, and a request for a special use permit for a proposed mixed-use development. Agenda Item 91, SDR 55716, a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 17-story mixed-use development, including 34,500 square feet of commercial space and 281 multifamily residential units. The applicant is Barnett Lieberman, and the owner is Leah Property LLC at .04 acres northeast corner of Casino Center Boulevard and Coolidge Avenue. Both items are C-2 General Commercial Zone. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on both items. These items are in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Are public hearing items which I declare open. And now, good afternoon, and please.
Good afternoon. Thank you again, Mayor Goodman. My name is Barnett Lieberman, and I'm here back again. This project is probably familiar to most of you. What happened here is, this has been previously approved, and we, like many others, are having difficulty financing. In May, I got a call from the Office of Development saying that the city had just been granted an allotment of the New Market Tax Credits, and would that help me to get ready to go? And I said that might be the piece we need. Quick investigation of the process instructed us that not more than 80% of the income of the proposed project could come from residential. So we devised a methodology and a design that would accomplish increasing the commercial part of the property by adding one floor to what had been previously approved between the ground floor commercial and the residential. That floor is for offices, and it is isolated from the residential. It has its own elevator, and they do share uniquely a concierge, so that it'll be a small office building, but it'll still have a concierge. Other than that, the project hasn't it'll still have a concierge. Other than that, the project hasn't been altered from that which was previously approved. So, I ask you to indulge this small change and approve this project.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parago, would you like to address any portion of this?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, it's, as the applicant has stated, it's a previously approved entitlement for the development on this property with those slight modifications, and staff and Planning Commission are recommending approval.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions, before I ask Councilman Coffin? Councilman Coffin? I think I closed that, but maybe I didn't. So, we're going to just close the public hearing.
Yeah, then, in this case, the Planning Commission unanimously has approved both of these, as well as staff. So, they, did they take into account parking, the other elements that would typically be changed or different?
I think we increased the parking by, we did increase the parking by, I think, by about twenty, twenty places. I'm not certain.
Okay. Oh, that's, I'm just curious, because the complaints that have come in mostly from the lofts are related to parking and whether or not it changes the chemistry of the streets down there.
Actually, I met yesterday with the Chair of the Regional Transportation Commission, Tina Quigley, and she said that she was so pleased that the vehicular access to the property is not off of Casino, but rather off the alleyway, which I'd like to rename Amuse at some time. It's worth more if you call it Amuse than an alley. Is that possible? Anyway, we'll review that some future time. But she was very excited that the two curb cuts that, I guess, are permitted on that site will not be used, and that, because it's a heavily-used thruway on the bus route there is, I guess, the most popular in the city, and it is the, she tells me, the most economically successful bus route in the country.
I move for approval of Item Ninety to follow the recommendation of Planning Commission and staff.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on Agenda Item Ninety for approval. Please cast your votes. And Councilman Barlow?
Aye.
And please post. That motion carries. And on Agenda Item Ninety-one, please, Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, I move for approval following the recommendation of Planning Commission and staff.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item Ninety-one. Councilman Barlow?
Aye.
Okay, then please cast your votes, and please post. Have a good trip home.
Thank you.
Yes, and Councilman Ross would like to say?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Through the Mayor, Mr. Lieberman, I apologize. My schedule didn't allow us to connect. Some things came up this past week that needed my attention. So, please accept my apology and good luck.
No, that's all right. But thank you very much. We'll be back.
Thank you.
You going to airport?
We're going to wait. Is your plane before our?
Well, no, I just thought I'd get the police escort if I can.
We'll look for you. Please move us to first class. Okay, keep me honest. We out in Seventy-nine and Eighty? Ms. Clerk? We aren't. Okay, Agenda Item Seventy-nine, EOT five-six-three-two-six, and a request for an extension of time of an approved special use permit, SUP thirty-one-hundred, for multifamily residential units. And Agenda Item Eighty, SDR five-six-three-two-seven, a request for an extension of time of an approved site development plan review, SDR thirty-one-oh-one, for proposed mixed-use residential commercial development. The applicant is Fisher Brothers Las Vegas LLC, and the owner is Integral Partners Park Place Center Las Vegas LLC on fifteen-point-nine-seven acres, three-oh-four-nine Sirius Avenue. Both items are C-one, limited commercial zone. Staff recommends denial on both items. These items are in Ward One with Councilwoman Tarkanian. Is the applicant or representation present?
Yes.
And you, in fact, are in tandem?
Yes, Jennifer Lazovich, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road, here today on behalf of the applicant.
And Terry Murphy, five-one-six South Sixth Street, Las Vegas, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, so, Mr. Parago, why don't we hear from you first on these, and then explanation of the denial?
Thank you, Your Honor. These, both of these items were originally approved back in two thousand and three. At this time, staff finds that perhaps there, if there's a project that's going to move forward, that it would be appropriate to seek new entitlements in order to have the opportunity to work with the neighborhood, and that, at this time, staff is recommending denial.
Thank you very much, and please go ahead with your presentation.
Good afternoon. We are seeking this extension of time. The same owners have owned this property through both the good times and bad times, and I hope that we are headed back to the good times again. And I set forth in my justification letter all the efforts that they have taken in the past two years to market the property, and I would like to just list those really quickly and then turn it over to Terry. We have been actively listing the property on Property Line, CoStar, LoopNet, Exceligen Applied Analysis. These are all national MLS sites for commercial properties. We do a weekly e-blast to all local and national brokers. We have it listed on the Cushman and Wakefield Network, but that's both local and national. We continue to prepare marketing flyers. We use signage onsite. We have had, and we do appreciate, efforts by your City of Las Vegas redevelopment staff to send potential interest our way. We have had meetings with people who have contacted your staff, and we appreciate them sending that interest our way. And also, we do continue to advertise in trade magazines that highlight retail, industrial, and office. It is a long-term hold for the Fisher family. They do see development here on this site. They would like the entitlements that are in place today to be extended, so that they can continue to actively market the site with some entitlements in place.
Thank you very much.
To add what Ms. Lazovich has provided to you, I would say that the entire site is in excess of seventy acres. They would like to retain the entire site and hopefully develop it as a large project at some point when they find users and when the market is ready. They are, again, actively seeking that. Fisher Family, just to refresh, so, they've been around since two thousand and three. Some of you have not. Fisher Family is a third-generation developer. They are based in New York City. This is one of their only, one of very few outside of New York holdings. They are third-generation bricklayers from Russia, and they are extremely successful in what they do. They don't do projects for the short term. They have a very, very long view of development. Early on in this site, it was proposed to be a mixed-use development with redevelopment of Rex Bell and so forth. While they've been here, while they have this property here, they continue to contribute to the Public Education Foundation, the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Foundation, and they're in the process of working with the Nevada Military Support Alliance to build a Fisher house at Nellis Air Force Base. And so, there is a deep commitment to this community, and they would like to keep those entitlements, because they enable us to market the property to the type of end-users that we want. We could sell off bits and parts, but that would not benefit the city in the long term. Your tax revenue would remain relatively stable. We'd like to create something that is special on that site, and we continue to look for that special thing, and when it comes along, we'll do so.
Thank you very much.
And to address concerns, we would never think of going with a long-term project without going back and visiting with the neighbors. We keep them updated from time to time. We haven't in the last couple of years, but every time we have an idea or something that we're going to think about doing, we absolutely go to the neighbors. That's without question.
Thank you. Thank you. And in the excused absence of Councilwoman Tarkanian, I've asked, and she has asked Councilman Ross to continue on her behalf.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, done with the public hearing on this?
Well, I don't even have it down as a public hearing item. Is it Mr. Scott?
It's an EOT and an SDR. These are.
No.
I don't believe it is a public hearing item.
On that, then, as requested to me of Councilwoman Tarkanian, Agenda Item Seventy-nine, the EOT, she would like to move for approval of the two-year extension time.
Okay, there's a motion on Agenda Item Seventy-nine. Please vote, and please post. And Councilman Barlow, did you hear?
Aye.
Thank you. And continue on, and post, please. Did not register. I'm pushing hard. And that motion carries. And on Agenda Item Eighty, please, Councilman Ross?
Would also move for approval of the SDR.
There's a motion on Agenda Item Eighty for approval. Please vote, and then please post.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. And that motion carries. Two-year extension on both, so thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, Agenda Item Eighty-one has been obeyed to the third of December. And Agenda Items Eighty-two, Eighty-three, and Eighty-four have been withdrawn without prejudice, so we move on to Agenda Item Eighty-five, and Eighty-six, and Eighty-seven. And this is, these are in your ward, Councilman Barlow, so I'm going to read them. This is Agenda Item Eighty-five, Z-O-N five-five-seven-five-eight, on a rezoning from P-dash-R professional office and parking to C-dash-one, limited commercial. Agenda Item Eighty-six, VAR five-five-seven-six-oh, a request for a variance to allow a residential adjacency setback of sixty-six feet where eighty-five feet is required for a proposed fifty-four-hundred-fifty-nine-square-foot animal hospital clinic or shelter with no outside pens. Agenda Item Eighty-seven, SDR five-five-seven-six-one, a request for a site development plan review for a proposed fifty-four-hundred-fifty-nine-square-foot animal hospital clinic or shelter with no outside pens with a waiver to allow a six-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the west property line where ten feet is required. The applicant owner is Pets RX Nevada, Inc., on point zero-four acres located at one-one-one-seven North Decatur. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on all items. These items are in Ward Five with Councilman Barlow, and are public hearing items which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? Okay, Mr. Parago?
Thank you, Your Honor. Everything's in order on this item, and staff and Planning Commission are recommending approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard on these hearing items? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearings. Thank you. Councilman Barlow, let's take them one at a time. On Agenda Item Eighty-five?
Yes, Mayor, on Agenda Item Eighty-five, I would like to move all staff and Mission for approval.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve on Eighty-five. Please vote. And please post. He moved it, I would think. Are you, you're an aye on your own motion, yes?
Yes, aye.
Okay, that's good. Do we post, and I missed it? Or did we? It passes. Agenda Item Eighty-six, Councilman?
More for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item Eighty-six. Please vote, and please post. And you might as well say aye, just to have our city clerk smiling.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And Agenda Item Eighty, oh, excuse me, post. And that passes. And on to Agenda Item Eighty-seven. How say you, Councilman Barlow?
More for approval and aye to make my city clerk smile.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. And that carries. So, thank you very, very much. And now, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eighty-eight. Okay, and that's SUP five-five-four-eight-seven. This is a public hearing. Applicant is Mr. N-N-S Bonanza LLC. Owner, Water Street LLC. For possible action, a request for a special use permit for a packaged liquor off-sale use within a proposed eighteen-hundred-eighty-two square-foot general retail establishment at thirty-five-ninety-five East Bonanza Road, Suite one-forty. This is C-one, limited commercial zone, in Ward Three with Councilman Coffin. The Planning Commission recommends denial. The staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. I see gentlemen standing in front of me, so somebody either is representing somebody or is the applicant.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Dave Etter, seven-seven-seven East Courts Avenue, Sandy Valley, Nevada. I am here today representing the applicant. With me also is Mr. Luis Gutierrez, who is the landlord. We're here to answer any questions that you might have concerning this project.
Thank you. And would you, again, repeat your name, please?
Yes, Luis Gutierrez, Water Street Center, seventy-five-hundred West Lake Main Boulevard, Las Vegas, eight-nine-one-two-eight.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Parago?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, staff is recommending approval. It does meet all distance separation requirements, but Planning Commission did recommend denial. They had some concerns over protected uses, although outside of the distance separation requirements.
Thank you very much. Is it a public hearing? Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Please come forward. Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. I have questions of the applicants, because, you know, it's, I'm looking at the Planning Commission testimony. We've surveyed that. I haven't met you individually, I don't think, on this issue. Now, had you come in before?
I've been coming in here.
Mr. Etter, I think it is?
Yes.
No.
We tried. We tried to get an appointment, but unfortunately, your schedule didn't work with.
When was that?
Over the last five weeks, since, I believe, the evening after the Planning Commission being.
I had lots of appointments with lots of people.
We lost one, and I think it was for the twenty-fourth, which is after.
Yeah, I think earlier you were going to be able to get me. It was the twenty-fourth, and that wasn't going to work for today, so.
Twenty-fourth of November?
November.
November.
I'm inclined to think that some miscommunications happened there. Mr. Gutierrez, you're the landlord?
Yes, sir.
Who is the person who would be running this business?
It would be a tenant. I'm also, I'm a developer. I'm also a contractor. So, I relate with liquor stores, so they own three other in town. He's a tenant. He's a tenant.
Well, who are they?
Nebraska, his name is Nebraska Ed Moon. He owns another convenience store in the county, and he owns a couple of other businesses, and he was wishing to go ahead and expand into the city. He's been cleared by Metropolitan Police Department, also the state of Nevada, for gaming applications, and has not had any incidences with his businesses. He runs a very clean operation.
The, when I look at the testimony, and I look at the discourse, you know, in the Planning Commission, it's clear there's a problem. And while the members of our staff are required to say approval if, in fact, you leave the strict zoning requirements, the, my Planning Commissioner, who I appoint, Trinity Schlotman, pointed out a number of things in his motion for denial, because he really surveyed the area, and he said there's a close by, a parochial school, an elementary school, I suppose that's a public elementary school, Desert Pines High School, the family court is across the street, and the juvenile family, juvenile facility is across the street. It's heavily populated by other uses, more alcohol sales not appropriate or necessary. And I think the one person who opposed that motion, don't think they said why they opposed it, or they just went against it. But how do you counter that sort of thing, that action?
They're all outside of the protected use area. The school is over eight-hundred feet away. The family courts, I believe, is about almost six-hundred feet away. The uses are all outside of the protective area, which is four-hundred feet.
Yes, I granted you that, but the kids are walking back and forth.
Right. It's a liquor store. It's not a convenience store. No one under the age of twenty-one can come into the business. Anything that leaves would be in a package or in a bag, which the contents would not be seen. So, it's actually a less intense use than a convenience store where the children can come right up to the bottles of beer, wine, or six-packs or twelve-packs. They can't even enter the building.
I'll tell you what, Your Honor, I'd rather see if we could work this out to where we might be able to have a meeting on this, because I know my staff has said to me that they didn't hear from you, and that they did not deny you a appointment. But I want to make sure you do have one. So, would you object to an advance on this item of, say, a month or so, December seventeenth, before you come back?
Can I tell you more about this building?
Well, no, I mean, it's like, we're on the issue of now, denying or delaying. Would you prefer to delay?
Prefer to delay, so we can have an appointment with you, yes.
All right, Luis, would that be satisfactory to you as the landlord?
Of course.
Okay. Your Honor, I think I will move now to obey Item Number Eighty-eight, this special use permit, until the regular council meeting of December seventeenth, so that I can meet with these applicants. And I would like you to bring the prospective tenant with you, too. Thank you.
And that's your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there's a motion to obey Eighty-eight till the seventeenth of December. Please cast your vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman. And please post. The motion carries. Thank you. The motion carries, thank you very much. And so, you'll make your appointment and I see Councilman Coffin's assistant back there, Felipe, and just make sure you've got the date and the time and all set.
I thank you very much and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, thank you. And so, eighty-nine has been obeyed to the seventeenth of December also. And then, agenda items ninety and ninety-one, we have taken care of. Well, how about these apples? Pardon, could you come forward? I can't hear you.
No, for item number eighty-nine, you were, you were calling the item?
Agenda item eighty-nine in our list of obeyed items was obeyed to December seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, I didn't know that, so that was, because I was gonna make a remark against it, so.
So, sorry, see you on the seventeenth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, that concludes our agenda items except ninety-two, which I'd instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance-litter abatements. Thank you. We'll move on to ninety-three. I can't move to ninety-three for some reason here. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion, any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I will move now on to agenda ninety-four. And this is council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. We're gonna start off with a litany of events for Councilman Barlow in Ward Five as read by his partner, Councilman Ross, please.
Thank you.
And Mayor, let me say this, Councilman Ross, don't stumble over my idol. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
You betcha, Councilman. Well, stay on the line and see how well I do here. Yes, he has a few events coming up here and November twentieth, the Doolittle Senior Center I've Got Talent Showcase will take place at the West Las Vegas Library Theater, nine-five-one West Lake Mead Boulevard. You may call the Doolittle Senior Center at seven-zero-two-two-two-nine-six-one-two-five for more information. And on December fourth, it will be his coffee with the councilman, so please join Councilman Barlow for the next coffee with the councilman, December fourth, from nine to ten a.m. for coffee and conversation at the Starbucks located at seven-five-one Rancho at Bonanza. On November seventh, it is Bluegrass in the Park. The next Bluegrass concert will take place Sunday, November second. Come out to enjoy the music of local Bluegrass bands playing traditional American music with banjos, fiddles, guitars, and mandolins. And I think Councilman Barlow will be playing the banjo, is that correct, Councilman?
Uh, yeah.
This is a free, this is a free event in which the entire family will enjoy. Please go to the Councilman's website for a full schedule of his events and any more information. You can also, on December eleventh, is the celebration of the completion of F Street and that will take place at ten a.m. Please contact Councilman Barlow's office at seven-zero-two-two-two-nine-five-four-four-three for more information. I'm sure that will be loaded with folks that wanna come out and see that. Also, the Ward Five social media continues to grow. You can stay informed with events and matters happening in Ward Five by following Councilman Barlow on Twitter and Facebook. And if you'd like to receive the Ward Five newsletter, please visit the Ward Five website at W W W dot Las Vegas Nevada dot gov backslash Ward, Ward Five and send your email address to be added to that list. How did I do, Councilman?
You did very well. Well, thanks for having me.
Thank you for attending with us, Councilman Barlow. Go do your, the work that you have to do down there for the National League of Cities. We appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor. Big travels and good luck with the meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
You're in good health, thank you.
Thanks so much. Let's just keep going. Thank you, good luck to you, be safe. Yes, Councilman Beers?
We have a new program called the Ward Two Walkers. They go for a one- or two-mile set of loops through the gorgeous Walupai Canyon Trailhead Park. That's on Walupai, just north of Alta. We're doing this every Monday and Thursday at eight a.m. We may adjust the time as you go forward, but for the next month, it'll be eight in the morning. Please come join the walkers and take either one or two loops through. It's a great way to start the week. I often join the walkers as well. I will not be there tomorrow morning because I've got another commitment, but I believe I will be there the following Monday. Beers with Beers this month, November twentieth, next Thursday, that would be tomorrow, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at John Cutter Saloon, where that's on the outside of the two-fifteen at Charleston and Desert Foothills Drive. We also have this day in music history, a serious auto accident for Sammy Davis Junior on this date in nineteen fifty-four. That was actually nine years after his first Las Vegas appearance, which was at the El Rancho Vegas in nineteen forty-five. A little-known fact, Sammy Davis Junior died in nineteen ninety, the same day as Jim Henson.
I didn't know that.
You can kind of insert your own editorial comment there.
Wow.
If you wish. That's all we got in Ward Two, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Coffin has said that he does not have items, so I just know I'm gonna be at F Street and celebrating the grand opening there, doing some good stuff out in Ward Two sometime this weekend. I can't remember which day, what hour, but I know it's building a bear, so I'm excited. So, Councilman Ross, thank you for tripling up and taking on everybody else's work.
My privilege, Mayor.
Yours to go now.
Glad everyone asked. I think, Councilman Beers, you'd get more people to the beers for beers if you were buying the beer, just a suggestion, so I just thought I'd throw that at you. The fun stuff first, Mayor and council members, and for the public's benefit, it is our annual Cowboy Christmas and Classic Car Show again at Floyd Lampark at Tulie Springs, Saturday, December sixth, ten a.m. to two p.m. And it is free. Did I say it was free? Arbor View will be out there, Bozar, Centennial Seville, all these great choirs will be performing. We'll have photos with Santa Claus. Mayor, I believe you and I are riding in in a classic car along with Santa Claus as well. It's a great opportunity to start the holiday season off right.
What happened to the Grinch?
Pardon me?
The Grinch?
I imagine the Grinch might be out there.
He's run away.
I'm gonna have to consult with Mayor Pro Tem Anthony's office on that, but it's a great time. This has turned out to be such a fabulous event for our families out in the Centennial Hills and in the city of Las Vegas. I mean, people come from all over for this wonderful event, so please, folks, get it on your calendars. I will be out there. Last year, we had to cancel because it snowed that same morning, so let's hope that doesn't happen again and doesn't look like it. So, now for the more serious stuff, Mayor and council members, our continued partnership with Nevada Child Seekers. We do have a missing young lady. Her name is Bailey Nicole Truman. She's sixteen years old, five foot two, one-hundred-and-twenty-five pounds. She's got blue eyes, brown hair. Her last contact was October twenty-fourth and she was last seen in the area of West Alexander and the two-fifteen near Cliff Shadows. I think we all know where that is. She was last seen wearing black yoga pants and a pink zipped-up hoodie. She may be carrying dark pink backpack, black duffel bag, she'll be wearing pink and black Adidas duffel, or having a pink and black Adidas duffel bag with personal belongings. Says extremely long natural eyelashes. Please, please, if anyone has seen this young lady, let's get her back. To people who want to take care of her and love her, contact the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department at seven-zero-two-eight-two-eight-three-one-one-one or of course, Nevada Child Seekers, seven-zero-two-four-five-eight-seven-zero-zero-nine. And let's see if we can get this young lady back to where she belongs. Thank you, Mayor and council members.
Thank you very, very much. And so, we will now adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, December third, at nine a.m. here in Chambers. Thank you all for attending, working, and viewing. Have a good holiday, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and be safe. Thank you, staff, for everything you're doing and continue to keep us alive and functioning.